Good evening and welcome to the Orange Public Library for the Orange City Council Debate. Tonight, we will hear from current council members and their challengers. The debate format will be as such. Each candidate will receive a question and have two minutes to answer. Following each candidate's two-minute response, there will be four- to five-minute debate period around the question given to each candidate. The timekeeper will yell "Time!" when the two minutes or five minutes has concluded. We're going to start with, and go down in order, all right? Ms. Hilbert, what inspired you to run for the Orange City Council?
I chose to run for office to help the people of Orange. Basically, we have many challenges here that we all face every day. Many of us have actually been suppressed, not too many people have been able to speak up about the current issues that are plaguing our city. And also because I want to be an advocate for progress. I saw a town with possibility, and yet its foundation is crumbling around us. Even in recent events, you know, we had two fires this week. That's history burning down around us. So, again, I believe in the possibility of Orange. I grew up with a lot of mentorship, a lot of programs, a lot of recreation, and a lot of those staples are no longer available in our community. So I'm here to rebuild Orange, to put the future forward, and basically to make sure that everyone is being heard and all the needs of the people are being addressed, because that's what we deserve. We deserve effective leadership, and we deserve an opportunity to live in the community and voice what we want to see within our community, and also to create opportunities for our children.
Ms. Torre.
Yes, ma'am. Well, it started with a very one concern of mine that I was burdened by the city of Orange, and as far as parking concerned. So it looks like, you know, I was in some type of war. And issue wasn't addressed, you know, by my councilmen. Everything was, you know, just pushed it to the side, to a point where a good friend of mine, who was another councilwoman from another world, reached out to me, so, and resolved the issue. So here I am, I say, "Okay, if you need change, you gotta be involved." Like, don't make the mistake, I'm not a politician, but right about now, it seems like people, common people, like Q and I, needs to be involved in our city affair. Because the city, first of all, they deciding the faith of the residents that lives here in Orange. Every decision that's going to be making at that table will have an impact on us ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. So if that's so, I wants to be part of it. It was very, very challenging, and the battle still goes on. So here I am today, and sitting at the table, you know, just to express, you know, those things that I'm looking at, different laws, you know, to be changed. Because my understanding of the whole body of the government is the fact that it's a decision that is taken collectively, it's not an individual decision. So if that decision needs to be made, I need to sit on that table and partake on that decision, you know, to make sure that the interest of the residents of Orange is being looked at. Because I've been a resident of Orange for over two decades. So here I am, I'm loving it, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Ms. Beckford.
All right, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Lord for another day, the Orange Public Library Board of Trustees, for the invitation and for putting on this debate, putting this whole thing together. I'd also like to thank the residents of Orange, all of you guys in the audience, and those who are watching, to see this city, our beloved township of, or city of Orange Township, improve in every way. Now, what inspired me to run for the Orange City Council are the residents of Orange and my love for Orange. As a resident of Orange for over sixteen years, I have heard, seen, and felt the frustrations, and listened to the concerns of my neighbors and friends. I have seen the city hijacked by individuals with hidden agendas, and the town railroaded by individuals with no thought or concern for the residents. Many have expressed their love for the city and have reminisced about what it used to be. Orange is a town that's saturated with history that has not even been uncovered or highlighted as it should. I have witnessed firsthand the slow exodus of lifelong residents whose property taxes have skyrocketed whilst the services, their services have diminished. I have experience on professionalism and the actual rudeness that should not be seen anywhere by anyone, much less in our beloved city. Now, Orange could be a gem that it is destined to be, but it needs all of us to work together as one, to be on the same page. I decided to run for Orange to be an agent of change, a catalyst for hope, to be a part of the solution, and most importantly, to be the ears and the mouth of the residents of Orange.
Mr. Beckford. Mr. Beckford, as you are aware, the purpose of city council is legislating. What new policies would you introduce as a council member?
As a council member, before thinking of introducing any new policies, I would first look at the policies that already exist and see whether or not they have been overlooked or implemented. It is important to make sure that policies that can benefit the city are enforced. For example, New Jersey has a penalty for littering, right? Which, based on the appearance of some of our streets, is evident that this policy is not currently being enforced. Now, I'll read the actual law as it states, according to the actual New Jersey law. It's written thus. And it's actually, one second, just give me one. Okay, it says here, and this is type of thirteen, section thirteen ninety-nine, penalties for littering. It says, "A person who throws drops of discard or otherwise place any litter or any nature upon public or private property other than in a literary septic commits a petty disorder of the person's offense, and notwithstanding the provisions of New Jersey Statute Two C forty-three-three. To the contrary, for every such offense shall be fined not less than a hundred or more than five hundred dollars." Now, that is a law that already exists that is not currently being enforced. Another policy is that we need strict code enforcement. If we allow the basic standards governing the maintenance appearance and condition of our properties to erode any further, rather than living in a beautiful neighborhood with manicured lawns and homes that reflect the affluence that we so desire, or even affordable apartments with safe working elevators and wheelchair access, we will be denying ourselves the opportunity to enhance our standard of living and quality of life. Now, those are some of the policies that I would look at, right? But if, if there's still a need to actually introduce new policies, one of the new, three of the new policies that I would consider is protection, protection for whistleblowers.
Ms. Torre.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, my main concern is on the parking and penalties that we have as a resident. And I know there's a lot of new projects in the city, and they building all these, a big building, and with no parking space. So if there's anything that needs to be put in place and amended and make sure that these, all the resident benefits from it will be one of them, because it's really about to hit the whole Orange with that parking situation with these new buildings around. And also, in our school zone, we need to make sure that we have police present in each school zone, you know, for our children, and to make sure that they get, you know, to school, you know, safely. As far as, and the pedestrian also are low. And there's a lot of streets, for instance, on Scotland Road. Well, you know, in the time of the school zone, you have vehicles coming in with at least fifty mile per hour. So those things need to be looked out, you know, and I will be definitely putting some more time into those type of policies. Thank you.
Ms. Hilbert.
No policies? So first and foremost, I would propose an assessment. So again, like Mr. Beckford said, we need to go in, look at our codes, see what no longer serves our community. We're always growing, there's people moving in, people moving out. Even the times, the trends, when we have cyber attacks and among other things that are afflicting us as a people, we need to be able to keep up with the trends and make sure that our laws are serving us in the best way possible. So I would like to do an assessment, and review, and revise, whatever possible, with not only, not only the city council, but also with the zoning board and planning board. I feel like there needs to be more communication amongst the boards and the committees in order to execute on those type of plans. So it's not something that a city council person can do solely, it is something that they would have to do their research and their homework in order to make these things possible. So beyond an assessment, I would like to look into community agreements. Yes, we have a lot of development coming in, but as a council person, we are there to demand what we would like to see investors, developers, whatever it may be. We want to demand them to contribute to our community. If their projects are not aligned with the values and the needs of the people in the community, then we as elected officials should question them every step of the way. So I'm here to represent the people and make sure that anyone who's coming into our town is also uplifting and improving our town. Whether that in a community agreement, it could be anything from planting trees, contributing to a new basketball court, or community service center. These are the type of things that we need to fuel back into our communities. Among, beyond that, parking, yes. Parking is an issue. I live on Lincoln Avenue, there's no parking, but Lincoln Avenue has development.
Ms. Hilbert, what budgetary concerns do you have?
The budget is currently over ninety million. Majority of those funds are dedicated for our workforce, mainly our fire and police department. We want that because we need, we need the services. Would I love to hire more? Absolutely hire more officers and more firefighters, because they're the ones that are going to be serving and protecting us, right? But we also need to look into the benefits. We also need to look into the other items that are on the budget. Currently, I am on the citizens' budget advisory committee, so I would be dissecting our current budget, once it's available, and I would be, as an elected official, one of those people who have already voted on the budget. So looking into it, I have been looking over the budget for over two years. I have picked it out, I've picked out a few things, such as overture spending when it comes to large amount of money going towards leased vehicles that are being used outside of the city, they're being used, not on city time. Also, a cell phone bill. It's a few items that can be deducted, if not minimized, to kind of curb the spending. I feel like our city needs to improve on their spending habits, because we have debt, and we actually want to work with our budget committee to make sure that we are ahead of the debt that's coming to us. You know, everyone has credit cards, right? Well, not everyone. But if you have a credit card and you just keep swiping, 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 and you never check into your account to see how much you've been spending, and being responsible to know when it's time to pay that expense back, then you're just going to have a balloon effect, and then your ground is going to crumble underneath you. I do not want the ground to crumble underneath us. I want us to be proactive, and I want us to be responsible with our spending, because the taxpayers deserve to see progress.
Yes, Ms. Torre.
Yes, ma'am. My understanding of the issue is that, yes, I mean, we are newcomers. We're running for office, and we don't have the fully understanding of how the functionality, you know, of these councilmen or councilwomen can do. First of all, and if they are presented with a budget. At first, I think, you know, they go through the budget, you know, one by one to evaluate to see what needs to be changed, or what needs to be curbed. So if, and in the negotiation of whatever money that is in the budget, if they needed to trim somewhere and make sure that, you know, some places where that needs to be adjusted, you know, those are, you know, our job, you know, as, you know, councilwoman and councilmen, you know, to sit on the table to evaluate all of that. But would need be, yes, you know, there will be some changes. But it comes to a time with me being engaged in these, to these political battle and trying to make it, you know, to the office, then I realize that, you know, it's, there's more to it. So once these information get available to you, and only then, you have the ability to assess it and read between the line and see what needs to be cut and what needs to be curved, yes, I'm forward, you know, I'm a goer and do that. But until then, so then I guess, it's just like us, you know, outside of the box and telling, trying to dictate, you know, how these funds are going. But my thing is, is that, for sure, we all are looking for the best interest of the citizen of Orange, and we'll make sure.
Mr. Beckford.
Okay, my main and number one budgetary concern is, can we have the budget on time? And I look in the cameras, because I know a lot of residents are looking, and they're saying, "When can we ever have a budget on time?" Now, I've been a resident in Orange for over sixteen years, and during that time, I have never been aware of the budget ever being on time. If there was a time, please, someone let me know. But my accountant used to tell me, when he did the accounts for my business, "You live and die by your numbers." My business used to get audited every year, and my books always had to be in order. Now, how can we run the city effectively or efficiently when we have no idea what our numbers are? That is how money gets lost, that is how funds get misappropriated. How can we truly say we have a deficit or a surplus without knowing what our numbers are? Now, if our fiscal house is in order, many of the other issues that we face would not exist. Accountability, integrity, and transparency, that would just reign supreme. But the next thing is that the need for a forensic audit would not, would not even be needed, because all the forensic audit would do is just mask the symptom, rather than provide a cure. Because if only a registered municipal accountant licensed in New Jersey can undertake the working of auditing the financial statements of any municipality or county, and not the national standard, which is known generally as the generally accepted accounting principles, all we have is the mongoose washing chicken. And as usual, the taxpayers are the ones that suffer. So my main budgetary concern is to have a budget on time.
Moderator, may I say something? You have the five minutes after, right?
Yeah, five minutes.
Okay, so just to point out a few things that were just said. Yes, absolutely, we definitely need to have the budget on time. Like I said, I'm on the committee, and the budget for 2022 has not even hit us yet. We are just going it day by day by day, and unfortunately, the money is being spent. So yes, I would love to see, as a committee member, that the budget comes to us prior, and that we are able to make recommendations prior to January, prior to the new fiscal year, so that it helps all of us as council members, or just as a city, to function appropriately, right? Because we need to be able to appropriate all the funds and delegate what needs to be shipped or moved. I would also love it if, you know, other council members also took the recommendations of the committee, because that would also help us. These are people who were appointed by council people. And the last thing I just wanted to point out is that Mr. Torre says, "Oh, well, you know, we're newcomers, we don't know." That is not a good excuse. The budget and any items that are up for, to be discussed at a council meeting is always posted with the agenda on our city website. Anybody can access it, along with the master plans for the city. That's all I have.
We know that information, we know that information exists, but the information are skewed. Because if you look at anything, it's always estimated, it's never actual. Now, for you to be able to run some, anything, a business effectively, you need to have the numbers, you need to have the correct numbers. If I know that ten is the number that I'm aiming towards, right? Then obviously, I'll work towards ten, but if I don't have a clue what that number is, just like Ms. Quintero said, you're just going to expect...
Ms. Hilbert.
Sir?
Ms. Hilbert.
Ms. Hilbert?
Yeah.
Right, Ms. Quintero Hilbert. Basically, what's going to happen is that you're just going to be spending frivolously, and then at the end of the year, you're working backwards, right? The community advisory board, the budget advisory committee, they made some suggestions. And if you have a community business budget advisory committee, and they're making suggestions, they must be looked at. You cannot just negate them and just go on and say, "Okay, we're going to keep spending," because that's how money gets wasted. And for a city, which is only two point two square miles, we're wasting a lot of money, and the taxpayers are the ones that bear the burden.
Well, what I was saying, you know, earlier, that the fact that we don't know, but see, experience speaks louder than anything. So these people have been sitting in that office for so long. So they have seen so many budgets come and go, so they have that experience. So the reason why I'm saying it, it's just like you have to be able to give the benefit of the doubt to these people, how the, the decision is collective. It's not a single person that's going to make that decision. They're making the decision collectively, so as a body. So let's say you have seven councilmen or women, so sitting at the table. So your opinion of one, the budget, is not, there's going to be a vote at the end of the day. So if that vote goes, and you got six against one, so you nail one voice. That's the reason why I point that out. Like I said, I'm a newcomer into this thing, I'm learning, I learn, you know, the system, that's how they run. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Beckford, what is your education background?
My education background is I was born in London, England, and I have a degree in business and finance. I was a member of the American Stock Exchange for eleven years. I worked as a Wall Street trader. And basically, I have my, I had a little different advice system, life and health, real estate unit, so basically, that's my background. Yeah?
Ms. Torre.
Wow, wow. Well, you know, I went to Rutgers University when I came to this country. You know, at first, my major was, you know, computer science. As a foreign student, I also learned English as a...
English as a second language.
So it was very, very hard, you know, for me at first, you know, going through, because it was like giving book to a toddler and telling them, you know, to learn. So from Rutgers University, I entered emergency medicine, so emergency medicine with ten Michael, whereas I started working as, you know, on EMS, you know, where I did, you know, rescue from NOK, Orange, East Orange. And from that point on, so, you know, as foreigners, we always have that goal for educational. So I jumped back in on the wagon, you know, for my degree as a criminal justice. You know, I have a degree in criminal justice. So from that, then, you know, the law enforcement background came in. So then you couldn't tell me anything, so I was all over the places. You know, doing, you know, arrests and disarming people, and, you know, and so forth and so on, you name it. So in the city of Orange as well, I was also nominated, you know, with a citation.
Time?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hilbert.
My early education was split between public and private schooling. I actually graduated from an all-girls Catholic high school in New York with honors. I received a scholarship, so my mom said, "That's where you're staying." I'm articulated at University of Hartford and West Hartford, Connecticut, where I was there for medical. And I also finished with my bachelor's in health science, pre-physical therapy, along with minor in business management. So beyond that, I also took courses at Essex County College to prepare me for graduate studies. I am currently finalizing my studies for my masters. And among that, I received a lot of experience over the years when it came to human resources. I've worked with U of D and J as a workforce administrator, and I also helped out in a human resources and compliance office, where I was responsible for reorganizing, oh, I would want to say modifying the job description and salary-based system that they had currently there for all of the employees at the hospital. I've also had experience in emergency dispatching. Also, I had experience working with an agency out in New York, was currently in New Jersey now, but I was a behavioral intervention specialist. I worked with the development disability population, and also, it's still a passion of mine, so I still volunteer from time to time. But my main focus has still and always will be in the service of people. So I have a colorful background, working with human relations, human resources, workforce, career development, business development, and among other things. So right now, my skills are unlimited. Oh, sorry, I'm a certified project manager, too. Go ahead.
Ms. Hilbert, do you believe all elected officials should attend the classes offered at, in Rutgers University that will allow them to become better public servants?
I don't feel that it should be mandatory, but I do think it is beneficial. It's beneficial for, if you're in a role, basically what I just said, you know, my skills are unlimited. Anywhere I go, I see it as a learning opportunity. If you're within a position that you should be maintaining your skill set in order to perform, every year, you normally get an evaluation of your job performance, right? So what are you doing in order to exceed the expectations as an employee? So as an elected official, you want to make sure that you're always learning something, always reaching out for the resources and the knowledge to bring back to your community in order to be more effective as a leader within your community. So if the Rutgers course was offered, I would take it, but I would not leave it as, you know, a taxpayer's responsibility to send me to school. I would take it as a personal responsibility to perform and make sure that I'm doing what I'm, what I was elected to do, and that's to legislate, appropriate, and to represent the people of Orange. So I don't feel like it should be mandatory, but I feel that all of us should be looking at some type of training to fulfill our roles.
Ms. Torre.
Sure, if the training is available, I think everyone should go for it, because education is important. You know, and due to the fact that we're dealing with issue, with numerous issues in the city, and the resident life depend on those decisions that we made on the table. So we really need to learn, put more education under our belt. So I think anybody should take it.
Mr. Beckford?
Yes, there's two things you have to look at. First, you got to look at the cost, how much is it going to cost? How much is this gonna cost to actually, um, do this course? Also, um, when is this course gonna be offered, right? And also who, um, would you be needing to attend in regards to the council individuals? Now, I've spent fourteen years with the City of New York. And I've spoken to mayors from, um, Bill de Blasio to the late David Dickens and Bloomberg. I've done presentations at the DA's office and all the different city agencies that you can imagine that exist in, uh, in New York City. And what you can, what you get from that is that life experience truffles both any day. Because many of us basically have studied. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not someone who would knock education because I basically put my kids through a public school in, um, right there in Orange. And my daughter, she was come, she was a magna cum laude in twenty twelve. And she went on and got her masters and her degree. And so does my son, my daughter just finished her degree a couple of years ago in Providence, City of Orange. And now she's doing her masters at Key. So I'm very, very up for education. But when it comes to servicing the people, sometimes it's experience that matters most of all.
Mr. Beckford, do you own a home in Orange?
Um, do I own a home? Yes, I do own a home in Orange. I first owned a home in the South Ward when I first moved here from New York in two thousand and five. And I currently own a home in Highland Terrace.
Mr. Torrey.
No, I don't unfortunately, um, due to the courses and of these homes in Orange. And, um, and that's the reason why I, I'm still here as an advocate, you know, just to make sure to make, um, these four or five homes available for all the residents, you know, in Orange.
Ms. Hilbert.
I currently rent in Orange. I do not own a home inside of Orange. Um, I am looking. I will, uh, after the election is over, I'll be getting married. And my future husband and I will be looking for a home for our family.
In regards, we do have a five-minute experience, right? So basically, in regards to being a homeowner in Orange, um, one of the things that we've noticed is the, is the escalating property taxes. When I first moved here in two thousand and five, the property taxes in the South Ward where I was living was five thousand dollars. I decided not to go to Long Island, right? Because I was planning to come to New Jersey to, to go to set a retirement. And I was thinking of actually South Ward because of its proximity to the Garden State. Also to, um, you know, to the Garden State, the two A and Turnpike. And my, my office at that time was located in downtown Brooklyn, so it was very easy for me to commute to work on the back. Now, the thing about it, I saw every year my property taxes getting raised and raised and raised and raised until it was over fifteen thousand. Now, the property taxes in the, in the West Ward are just the same, right? And I feel the burden of the homeowners when they complain about the astronomical property taxes and the services which are non-existent. Because one of the things that I, that I hate every Saturday is when the garbage man comes to pick up the garbage, he always leaves something behind. And he always pretend like he's trying to shake you down. Now, that should be unheard of because with the property taxes and also I have individuals who had kids who rather than send them to the public school, because our public school had deteriorated to the point where an A in Orange is a C in Milburn, right? They send them to private school. So when you think about property taxes on top of the public school and the services that we, that we don't even have, it's something, something to be actually taken into consideration. And that's why I'm here to represent you as a homeowner who can share your burden.
Okay, um, Cassie's up? All right. So, um, I do not own a home in Orange. Uh, growing up, my family, I come from a long line of massive builders, architects, and business owners. Um, when they came here to this country, they started in Miami and moved their way up. So, um, currently I do not own a home, but my businesses are homes. And so I know what it is to pay for property taxes, sewage, um, water bills, you know? And I know what it is to be a landlord. So I feel that I am the best representative when it comes to tenants, homeowners, and landlords because I've seen it at all sides. You understand? So it's also when it comes to, like Mr. Beckford was saying, every year your taxes are increasing. Every year, everything increases. There's inflation of everything. I'm scared to buy a box of cereal for my kids, you know? Everything's increasing. However, it is at the rate that it's increasing that is alarming everyone here in Orange. And I feel that no one can say that, oh, I'm gonna lower taxes. No, we're just gonna stabilize. So we're gonna look for the right way as, uh, representatives to introduce grant money, to introduce, um, new ideas and even build new alliances with other county or state officials to fight for Orange residents because our tax rate is too high. And I don't wanna see families leave. I really don't. There's a lot of people who've held on to their homes for over decades. And you would like to see that wealth stay within the family. Um, and I'm just gonna end it with this. Uh, I do have a question for Mr. Beckford. Mr. Beckford?
Sure.
At what point in time did you purchase four eleven Highland Terrace? Because I know the homeowner who owns that property.
That's Mrs. Stewart. Mr. Donald Stewart is the owner of that property.
Right, and they said that you, wait a minute, I'm not finished. They said that you rented a floor from them. So at what point in time did you purchase that property? Because I feel like you're lying to the re- I feel like you're lying to the residents and you lied on your literature as well, saying that you're a homeowner. You're not currently a homeowner. You probably were a homeowner in South Ward many years ago. But at this present day and time, or at the present day and time that you pr- that you printed that literature, when did you purchase that property?
I owned four one seven Highland Terrace. And if you look in the records, you can see that that property was purchased by.
When? I asked you when. I asked you when.
I used to own.
No, you're not answering my question. I asked you when.
I'll, I'll answer your question because I own, I have other properties as well, right? But the question is, I do rent from four seven, four eleven Highland Terrace.
Okay.
Right? And I own four seventeen Highland Terrace. Right? And the reason why is because I am also looking to purchase four eleven Highland Terrace from Mrs. Stewart. That's the reason why. And that's, and the thing about it that she's, she's actually talking about is the fact that I pay property taxes. I pay water bill. I pay. And I can show that to you anytime you want.
No, that's your private business. Yeah, I don't wanna see your bills. I don't wanna see your bills.
Well, you know, I have, I really have compassion for, um.
Oh, there's no five minutes. It's over.
Mr. Beckford. Have you been actively involved in voluntary organizations in the community? If so, please identify them and the role you have played.
Um, currently, I, I haven't actually been in any organized, any organized, um, community activities. But I do have done many work in the community because I do a cold drive. I also, um, collect food from the pantry, right? Where Love of Jesus, you know, busy to where you are. And basically distribute food, you know, to others around. I have done a lot of international work because right now I actually, um, support an orphanage in Uganda where I actually, um, give, you know, give clothes and actually help to finance as well. Um, I used to actually support, I, when I first came, I was a part of the Orange Society. And, um, the taxes too high. That was a, that was an organization that we had. And also I was a part of the, the group that put together a, a presentation at this very same library with Mr. Samuel White, who actually was the one who constructed, um, this library, or his grandson. Yeah.
Mr. Torrey.
Yeah, um, yes, I did. I did some, uh, community work, uh, at one time. Uh, when I was actually doing an internship, you know, with Orange Police. And, um, my, uh, direct commander was, you know, Lieutenant Soto and, um, Captain Sully. So I was part of the community and, uh, helping, you know, you see, I mean, uh, I guess, you know, like, it was like, um, bodyguard work and, you know, be like the physical presence because I'm in, uh, with my size. So, um, yeah, I did, uh, that was in two thousand eight, you know, to be, um, exact.
Can you repeat the question?
Have you been actively involved in voluntary organizations in the community? If so, please identify them and the role you have played.
Yes. So currently in Orange, because that was the question. Uh, currently in Orange, I am, I am actively, um, uh, working with the community. Um, over the years, I have always donated to the fire department. I donated waters to the fire department. I've donated toys for the toy drive to the fire department. And also donated food for the Thanksgiving meals for the fire department. Last year, I took it, I took it upon myself, since I am a business owner of three businesses, my business put aside money in order to purchase turkeys to donate to the community. We also purchased toys to donate. So the organizations that I currently work with, I would like to say, uh, is Metcalf, the Friends of Metcalf. Currently, we have been discussing on protecting the green spaces in the community, getting the children involved in gardening, and also finding a site for a second community garden. As of today, no one really knows that there is a community garden in New, in Orange, New Jersey, but there is. There's one over on Cleveland, um, Cleveland Street. So I am working with them and seeing how we could branch out and help the community and get them involved. And I also work with the, uh, food pantries. There's two of them. There's one at, uh, Love of Jesus, which is my church. And over during the pandemic, we delivered groceries to the seniors, to the senior buildings. So currently, right now, we still help out with the food pantry. But being that I'm busy right now with my business, I have not been physically delivering. But I have volunteers who still go on my behalf and on the behalf of my company.
Ms. Hilbert, are you committed to a yearly survey of family, students, community residents, faculty and staff about what they see as a major strengths and shortcomings of the city council? If so, are you committed to publicly sharing the results?
Oh, absolutely. I feel like this is a trick question. I come from an HR background. Uh, I feel that everyone should have a yearly evaluation. And yes, it should be available for the residents, um, to review. Um, basically, that lets us know our checks and balances. That lets us know our strengths, our weaknesses, where we can improve. Maybe there's a group of, of residents that felt like they weren't being heard. Every street has a different issue. So if there's something where we might need to regroup and find a better way to address the issues, then I am up for, um, constructive criticism. I am, I have an open door policy, right? That's the HR talking. And, um, honestly, I love working closely with the people to hold me accountable, to make sure that I am fulfilling my role. So I would be open to that every year. Yes.
Yeah, I would definitely be available, um, available, uh, for that, you know, um. But I'm not gonna be able to elaborate on it, but, you know, I, I'm, will be all for it. Thank you.
Mr. Beckford?
Yeah. If it's gonna be beneficial and it's gonna aid us in doing our jobs better, then obviously it, I would be for it. But then, like I said, everything that we talk about, it comes with a cost, right? And it comes with also some form of administrative work that needs to be done to have it implemented. Now, one of the things about doing those surveys, right? Is that the results can always be skewed unless it's done professionally and it's also done honestly. So I will be for it, but obviously it has to be administered in a way where the individual who are doing it are not doing it with any bias, right? It's just a straight, neutral way to get information.
I'd like to add to that. So, um, because this is an open discussion, really. So are you saying that you're afraid that the residents would be biased on how they evaluate an elected official?
No, if you listen to what I said.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, right. Basically, it's the way the questions are asked. Because I can ask one question for, to get two different answers, right? And anyone with common sense can know that if you ask a question a certain way to get the answer that you want, you can always skew that question to do that. So what I'm saying is that the way that we have, we could administer that is to have someone, right? Other than someone in Orange, right? Who might be looking for a decision one way or the other. To come up with the actual questions and present them to the actual participant, um, not the participant, but present them to the residents so that they may be answered, so we can get a fair and neutral answer.
Yeah, I can't say I'm in agreement or not in agreement, but when you say.
No, I, I've done this, I've done this many times. And I've actually, um, you know, done questionnaires.
But what I'm saying is what is the cost to get an outside auditor? When we're talking about our budget, we actually have to have the money to pay for something like that.
Exactly. And that's why I said with everything, there's, there's a cost associated to it. So what you have to look at, is this something that is absolutely relevant in order to get our fiscal house in order? Is this something that has a hidden agenda behind it? You have, we have to be very concise in exactly what we're trying to do. Because if we're just doing stuff arbitrarily with, you know, just to do it, then obviously, well, we're just ending and wasting money.
I don't think, I don't think allowing the residents to voice their opinion is, is a waste of time. I feel like you're just snuffing them out. And we have to be transparent. That's what we, that's what we, we're here for.
But transparency is.
What he's trying to say is that is there will, he wanna make sure that is no malicious attempt, you know, with it. So like, you know, have some, an entity, an outside entity that, uh, supervising the whole operation. And in that way, you know, it will be a safer way to go.
But we'll be elected officials. We could create an outline.
Okay. We could do that.
We could do that. If all seven could, uh, vote on it, right?
Exactly.
Only if.
Only if, if they agree.
Exactly. Here we go.
Yeah.
We got it.
All right, Mr. Beckford, if you are selected by voters, what are your priorities for the city of Orange Township?
Um, the first priority is to be able to have the budget. We need to have a budget, a working budget, right? That's, that's the priority. That's the main priority. We need to know what our numbers are, right? The other, the other, um, thing that we also need to do is that we need to be able to have good customer service. We need to have telephone encounter etiquette. Now, I've been to, to City Hall and I've been insulted. I've been, seriously, they, the way they talk to you, it's as if they, it's like, what are you doing here, right? And this is our city. This is our beloved Orange. And we need to have proper customer service. Even when you pick up the phone, right? When you call someone on the phone. I mean, this is, this is absurd. This is absurd. So that, those are some of the things that we need to look at. If we need to rise from the ashes, right? Which have been created by other administrations, we need to really put our best foot forward. And the only way we can do that is to present a face that will say, yes, we are willing to change and these are the changes that we're willing to implement. And one of the first change is the appearance of our city.
Same question to Torrey.
Yes. Again, well, you know, I will be just focused on, on, on the parking issue. Uh, because the parking issue is very, very, uh, a need, you know, for the Orange resident. You know, I will make sure that, you know, somehow we, we all come to a consensus, you know, to, to make that, um, uh, to give a break, you know, to the, um, the resident. And our youth, you know, we need, also needs to, um, you know, just create like a program for our youth to make sure that, you know, they get enough after, uh, what you're gonna, after school program, you know, that can really, uh, make sure that their education, you know, um, uh, they are like well surrounded with, you know, um, in terms of, um, education. And then also my final thing will be, um, mental health care. So mental health care is very, very important, you know, in a city. You know, so because of a number of incidents that happen, you know, in the city, first of all, like when the police get a call, you know, to, um, a resident and somehow they don't know the history of that person. But that person somehow has some type of mental issue. And you all, all the time you end up in a bad, you know, uh, uh, a bad handing where the resident get shot, killed, and so. So in order to avoid that, we need to very, uh, take that healthcare, you know, uh, seriously and somehow vote a budget for it, you know, in our city. And also, and with our fire department. You know, in Orange, we have fire department, one fire department in Orange. God forbid. You know, you have a multiple fires or whatever, then we don't. So we need to have like a contingency plan. So we need to have like a contingency plan, you know, for all of that. So that will be definitely.
Ms. Ms. Hilbert?
So I have many priorities, but I'm gonna see what I could say in two minutes. So number one, definitely the budget. In order to see the programming that we wanna, you know, uh nurture or help out with our youth or help out with our homeowners or help out with our seniors, you know, we have to have a budget in place that we can actually abide by. Um, there's also the issue with code enforcement. Code enforcement is a huge thing for me. Like I said, I am a renter. Um I've seen all sides of this thing, but right now, I feel like a lot of the renters aren't really being supported. And we were threatened prior to the pandemic, where you have rent increases every year. Renters also pay the taxes that are increasing in this town, so we cannot forget about them. We don't have a tenant association within our community, which brings me to my second concern, communication. We are lacking communication within our community, which is why a lot of people, they do not engage, they do not participate. So as an elected official, as a West Ward Councilwoman, I would like to bring back monthly meetings. I would like to bring a face, bring presence to the community so that they know they have a representative amongst them and that they are working on the budget. They're working on bringing back youth leadership and youth programs and they're working on bringing employment. As a business owner, I don't see any space, commercial space for up and coming entrepreneurs. We need to work on our economy as well. Our main street almost burned down yesterday, but it's still standing and it has a lot of history. No more apartments, more commercial space, and we might actually be able to strike a five-year contract with a reputable, a reputable company who will come here and bring jobs and bring more uh attention to our city.
Yeah. One of, we have five minutes.
Five minutes.
Okay. In all, in all this that we, we've been talking about, one thing that I haven't heard anyone mention yet, and that is the school system. And the school system is something that, you know, is so dear to my heart because education, as we know, is the key to success. And I remember one time going and doing a presentation over at Rikers Island and a correction officer said to me that their stupidity is my job security. Now, what we are doing is that we are not preparing our kids for colleges. We're not preparing our kids to be the leaders of the future. We're preparing our kids to be locked up. And what happens is that when you close down all these after-school programs and the Y and all these facilities, right? What happens is that kids will always be kids, right? You cannot expect them to be anything else and they will vent, they will play, they will do stuff. They're not like kids in our days, but what happened is that they still need an outlet. We need to have good programs for them. We need to have places where they can go and play and be safe. I spoke to a woman at um thirty-two, um thirty-two Lincoln Avenue and she was just so frustrated because her kid, all he does is come home and sit down and watch TV, right? There's nothing for them to do. So what we have to do, we have to realize that we have to have programs for these kids. And also, also, we have to get the school off the Abbott School List, right? Because the Abbott School List basically means that these are failing schools. And I know that there'll be big repercussions because obviously it will affect the budget, but we have to find a way to make it better for our kids so that they can end up to be the leaders of the future rather than be locked up in the penal system.
We still have time for the last one?
Nothing? All right, Mr. Beckford, how would they impact the municipal budget?
How would they impact the municipal budget? That's a very good question. Because the thing about it is that if we have a budget, we'll know how it would impact the budget. But if there is no budget, it's, it's whatever, it's whatever you say, whatever number you throw out there. Because some of these programs that we were talking about, for example, the customer service and the just common decency, that will have no impact on the budget because it's just a normal human thing to do. When I grew up, one of the things my mom always taught me, please and thank you, simple, that has no impact on the budget. But it, it goes far, it goes far in our, in our community. So basically, what we have to do is to make sure that we do have a budget and then when we have the budget in place, then we can see how these will impact the budget once they're implemented.
Ms. Tori?
Well, the point is one thing about budgeting, like I said before, um, once we receive all the packages, you know, um, and we know what number we're working with, then you have the ability to curve it. So now, if you don't have access to those number, there is nothing really you can do, you know, to, uh in order to, to make any changes and any curve or anything. So um it's important, you know, to know those numbers.
Ms. Hilbert?
Can you ask the question again?
Yes, how would they impact the municipal budget?
Um, I actually have to agree with these gentlemen here. Um, the budget is ongoing issue where sometimes you don't know what's happening. So it wouldn't be ideal to have a starting figure to know what to do, what not to do, how to lean this way, how to lean that way, how to negotiate for a lesser cost. Um but I wouldn't really be able to voice an opinion on that. And so we are actually working on making a budget available on time and listening to the recommendations of other people who are actually experts within the field. Uh that's what I would like to see happen. But I feel that there, there's always a way to, to make it happen if we're just proactive.
All right, Ms. Hilbert, how would you implement your priorities legislative?
So um my priorities was like the communication, right? So communication, right now, everyone is pulling their hair out because you have more than one website, right? We have all these different groups, different organizations, and they can be thrown in the same event in the same week. The community is frustrated, they're worn out and they're confused. Especially, no one here has even mentioned our undocumented residents. Our residents who have English as a second language, who have to look to their kids to actually communicate with them, what the heck is going on in the city? You know, so that's, that's a hardship on top of that. You're not gonna have a, a turnout if people don't know what's happening and you're not really doing the necessary steps to reach them, right? So communication, I wanna work on that. Um that would be one of the things, like what we need to minimize or really um condense what we're doing, maybe merge some things. So I think that will be a start to really just say, hey, I know right now they are working on uh new fiber optics, getting a new system up and going so that the city, the, and the police department are able to work on that. But this is something like I would build off of that. I would build off of that and the legislation that I will put in place is really to say, hey, number one, let's get one website because we shouldn't have to pay for two. Council members shouldn't have to pay for their own email system, you know? Um, another thing is the parking situation, permits. That is something that can be done. There's homeowners who don't have driveways, okay? There are people who have more than two cars, more than two cars for an apartment. So I would like to see if we could work with the zoning and the planning boards to say, hey, we need two parking spaces per apartment. That is the ideal situation because you're trying to turn Orange into a transient city, but you don't offer transient benefits.
Well, that's correct. You know, like, you know, when I first started my journey, it was, it, it was um on that parking issue. Because there's a definite, you know, uh need for the Orange people here, uh for the resident. Because you think about all this building that they're building around, you know, uh the place. So think about where these people going to park their vehicle. We already have, you know, problem parking our vehicle on our street. So therefore, if we are not taking and looking, you know, with the due diligence to make something, you know, as a law, that would be my first things to do, you know, uh in Orange, to make sure that our resident, you know, get, instead of alternating the street parking, you know, we can have our vehicle parked on both sides of the street. And if the need be to move it for the cleaning, what cleaning take like what, half an hour, forty-five minutes on the long? So we switched it, you know, the line. So that would be my main focus. And again, secondly, like I said, eh, well, I will work some on, on a mental health, you know, situation in a, in a, in a city of Orange because it's needed in order to avoid um, you know, further problem. Thank you.
Ms. Beckford?
Yes, uh for the customer service and um, and the counter etiquette, basically policies just need to be drawn up. Once the policies have been drawn up, obviously, they just need to be taught. So you need training in everything that you do in order to actually equip the individuals, you need them to be trained. So that's something that um I look at. Um also, in regards to the actual parking issue, before I get to the parking issue, let me just talk a little bit about the code enforcement. Because that's something that we need to really, really enforce. Because we have areas that are zoned as residential, but have been used as commercial, right? We have people parking big rig trucks and using their yard as, as mechanic shops and garages and, and stuff like that. And what that does, it brings down the quality of life in our, in our city, right? Um there's other things within the code enforcement as well that we also need to do. Because just like um Ms. Hilbert talked about the undocumented, right down there at Central and um, Central and Scotland, in the mornings, they're there, they're human beings. But we need to find a way to address that problem rather than just to have the police just run them away. Because when they run them away, they just go, they used to do that, but they don't do that anymore, right? But we need to address that problem as well because that also brings down the quality of life as well in our community.
All right, Mr. Beckford?
Um just to bring light to the mental uh, the mental health forum that you're, you're discussing, Mr. Tori.
Yes.
Um, like I said, every opportunity is a learning opportunity for me. So anywhere I am, I would like to share my knowledge, okay? So being in tune with the community, I know for a fact that there is a group that's already focused on mental health because mental health is also my, my backing, my background. And uh they are looking for locations to create a facility that will be able to service especially our homeless individuals who travel back and forth between the, the train stations, right? Because we haven't mentioned the train stations yet. Right? Um but also, you know, there, there are issues with finding a location for that because like Mr. Beckford said, zoning. You know, at the beginning, when I ran back in twenty twenty, I said, oh, look at all this land right here on Lincoln and Highland. Why can't they just give us parking structures right here? You know why? I did my homework. The zoning doesn't allow it. So no one knows this. We see this land and we see where apartment builders are going, but we don't know and then we're not educated and then we can't educate each other as a community. So, you know, what I do know is that anywhere where it's slated for redevelopment and mixed commercial use, it is a possibility for us to get parking structures put in there. But we do have to address our budget issues. We have to address our um infestation issues. We can't focus on City Hall professionalism because we are not, I'm not saying it's not important, because I got snapped at a couple of times in City Hall, but we are not in control of administration, that is the business administrator.
Okay, Mr. Beckford, what is your understanding of the tax levy and how many are there?
Okay, my understanding of the tax levy basically is the fact that we have, I don't give, just give me one second and I'll get the numbers for you. We have six. And we, the tax levy is basically the prop, in regards to the property taxes, right? And what actually goes towards the, the whole, the taxes, how they're given up. Now, we have here, and this is based on the actual twenty twenty Canada uh property tax levy, seventy-one percent, seventy-one point three eight went towards municipal purpose taxes. Um, point six six went towards this municipal library, right? Point five four went to municipal open spaces. Seventeen point uh nine one percent went towards the local school district, which also gets money from Trenton as well, right? And also, nine point two two was for the county and point three zero uh went towards the county open spaces. Now, one of the things about the actual uh property tax levy is the, is the burden it has on the resident. We, as the city of Orange and the whole county of Essex, have the second highest property tax levy, right? Now, on the actual form that I received from um, from the city, that I printed off the website, actually, it says it's five point six. From the actual state website, it says point five point seven eight. Urbington is the only one who has a higher property tax levy of five point nine seven nine. That's, that's, that's atrocious, that's, that's, that's ridiculous. And that's why people here are suffering because of the fact that it's just too high. It's just too high. And one of the reasons why I keep saying, and when you look at this, the current breakdown, municipal purpose, uh municipal purpose tax estimated, you see, it's all estimated, estimated. We have to get away from the estimation and to have real facts. We need the numbers. And that's the only way in which we can make any progress when we have real numbers that we can work with.
Ms. Tori?
Well, right, like I said, I mean, I really don't have any inspectees on that area. And with all these things that I'm trying to wrap around my head around it, and um my thing is that the information will be available to us when we sit on that table, you know, with the rest of the council. And only then we should be able, you know, to make changes and to look at it with a fresh eyes. And now, we can really uh read between the lines to see what we can do to improve it. You know, all, whatever that in place, we can go with that. That's all.
Ms. Hilbert?
So just for those at home or those who are in the audience who don't know what a tax levy is, um the tax levy actually permits the legal seizure of your property to satisfy a tax debt, right? So if you're a renter, it doesn't apply to you. Um so this is just me telling you, there's a difference between a tax levy and a tax lien. For our city, we have the county, we have the municipal, and then we have um our school district. And like Mr. Beckford said, Trenton also gives money to our school system as well. So um the tax levies right now, um the impact, that was the question, right, the impact on our budget? The impact is, is um, there's.
No.
No?
No, it was, what is, uh what is your understanding of the tax levy and how many are there?
Oh, that was the next question. I'm jumping, I'm overprepared for you guys, so sorry. Okay, so yeah, so my understanding, you know, basically, when you look at the numbers, he's, uh, Mr. Beckford is accurate. You know, Orange is the second highest. It's Urbington, Orange, and then I believe it's um, um East Orange, okay? And then we're higher than Newark, which is like three point something. Do you have that information, Mr. Beckford?
I do.
Yeah, it's like three point something.
Seven three.
Three point seventy-three. So when you look at those numbers, you wonder why. And you don't wanna automatically go to the obvious, oh, we're urban communities, right?
Right.
Because we hate, well, I don't like the word urban. Um because I feel like it kind of puts a shadow and a type of stereotype over us as if we don't deserve a certain quality of life. And so um, you know, these are the tax rates, these are the issues that we have and we need to focus on it because if we're spending more money and not getting more benefits for it, more services for it, then yeah, it needs to be addressed and I, and as an elected official with more information, I will be willing to look into that.
We do have our five minutes left.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was something that I just um wanted to state, which is also something that I have as, you know, on the agenda is the fact that we need to create programs to help seniors and vet and veterans struggling to pay their property taxes because it is unfair for someone who have, who basically paid off their house thirty odd years ago, who is living on a fixed income, to lose their house to the tax lien because they cannot pay for that house. That is heartless, it's unimaginable, and for us as a people, we can do better. We can do better, right? And one of the things is that we have a lot of homeowners. And one of the things is that we have a lot of homeowners, because I've spoken to a few, who are in that predicament. And I've seen individuals, one of my neighbor when I was in the South Ward opposite me, he actually left and went to Maryland because he couldn't pay property taxes anymore, right? And I've seen individuals walk away from their houses for that very same reason. Now, if we want Orange to be the Orange that it should be, we have to find ways to help these individuals, right? We know there's gonna try and be scammers in the middle, but we have to weed them out, right? And find who are really legit and who really do need the help and help them accordingly.
And just to add to that, it starts with the local, it starts with the local responsibility, local education, linking and can, and connecting the people with the tax office, with the assessors, um, looking for those programs. I know recently I shared on my social media that there's a possible program to help families get out of the tax liens. And, and, and actually the fear of losing your home, you know, once it goes up for auction, that's it, right? So there's actually being something right now that's on the table with Congress for the state of New Jersey to help people, um, regain their property, regain their homes. Um, but it shouldn't have to get to that. So I feel like it starts with local representation, getting involved, and educating all of the neighbors.
Ms. Hilbert, what is the impact on the municipal budget and the residents in the city of Orange Township?
The impact of our budget, um, we basically, we have poor spending habits in the city. Um, the money is not really accounted for. We've received grants, we've received many, um, many opportunities to improve on our train station, to improve on our downtown area, even opportunities to revitalize our community over about Orange Memorial Hospital, which unfortunately we don't own. Um, and it's sad to say, as a community, we didn't have anything to help us during a pandemic. We had no medical facilities, no urgent cares, no clinics, no nothing in our community. Most of the stuff, our, our, well, we, as a community, we had to go outside of our city limits for. So when it comes to the budget and its impacts, it's really re- relieving ourselves vulnerable. If we're not spending wisely with the money that we do have, then basically we're losing out on, um, other services, other opportunities to really, uh, compete with neighborhood communities. Whereas if we were putting the right funding into the revitalization and the development of our train stations and our economy, we would have a whole lot more people coming to our community and br- and bring more revenue. So that we might be able to ease some of the bills that we have as a township, you understand? So when our budget is, uh, not really prepared on time, where we're not actually able to forecast uh, the ups, the, the lows and the highs, you know, on our budget, it's, it's putting us at a disadvantage. And it's hurting the people and it's hurting our community. And a lot of us are struggling to make sense of it all. But a lot of us choose to close our eyes. I would not be one of those people.
Mr. Torrey?
Well, again, uh, in order to make, you know, um, decision on those budgets, we have to have access, you know, with those information, you know, speculating on, you know, the budget issue. I mean, I will not really, you know, advise that. Because in order to do something about a budget, you need to have all the facts, you know, in order to, uh, analyze it and come up, you know, with something that's gonna be constructive for the city. So until we get those, our hands are set on that table, you know, just to look at the budget, then we'd be able, you know, just to make, uh, what you call it, uh, any comment or any changes on, on those numbers. But until then, eh, you know, just.
Okay. Ms. Beckford?
Yes, as I listen to your question, um, I'd just say that this is something that clearly separates me from the other candidates. Here it is. A direct question was answered and a whole answer was given. We should never even address the question. And that is something that I found with the residents that I spoke to them, is that nobody listened. The question asks, what is the impact on the municipal budget and the residents in the city of Orange Township? That's it. The answer, based on the twenty twenty, was that the average homeowner paid nine thousand eight hundred twelve thousand twenty-five cents. That is the impact. That's it. And that just goes to show you what I'm talking about, right? I'm wanting to be ears and the mouth for the residents. I'm not just gonna tell them a lot of fluff. I'm gonna tell them facts. And that's what we need to do as council members and as, as people within the city, is to be straight up, right? Just be straight up. Just tell it to me as it is, and then we can work together. So the impact is nine thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents as of the twenty twenty calendar year budget.
Okay. Mr. Beckford, what is your election platform?
Okay, my election platform is in regards to the economy. And this is something that has already started redevelopment of the New Jersey Transit train station. I would work to bring new businesses into Orange. Right now, I have a friend of mine who actually owns a business here and wants to expand. And I was able to get him in touch with Mr. Mays, and they're working on trying to get a larger location so he can stay right here in Orange. Work to stabilize property taxes, create job opportunities. In regards to housing, I would like to advocate for strict code enforcement, advocate for affordable rents, homeowners buy a program and resources, and as I said earlier, to create programs to help seniors and veterans struggling to pay their property taxes. For the school, I would like to advocate for elevated core curriculum, which is some, I was actually a part of the curriculum years ago, right? When, um, Mr. Lee was, um, was the superintendent. Uh, expand training and after-school programs. I would like to also do entrepreneurial and financial literacy. Work with the school board to reduce overcrowding in the public school system. And in regards to quality of life, is to strengthen and empower our neighborhood watch programs, signage and lighting on main streets and off streets. If anybody ever walk into the valley and you don't know where you're going, you're gonna get lost. There's no signs, right? Advocate and develop programs that will improve safety in the West Ward and create ways to keep the West Ward clean. And one of the ways that we spoke about was just implement a law that's already in existence.
Mr. Torrey?
Uh, simple, uh, with me is, um, crime prevention, civilization of, of property taxes, uh, better quality of life, um, available, uh, street parking, um, clean street, of course, and a safe walk in Orange.
Ms. Hilbert?
So my platform is based, number one, off of the people. Um, anything that I put on my literature was information that I collected from the people, from walking, talking, knocking on their doors multiple times and getting their, their point of view, their perspective. So I basically created a summary of everything that I heard based off of what the people were looking for. And that's basically, yes, the environment. We need to work on keeping our streets clean, keeping our neighborhoods clean. We need to make sure that we're giving the people, uh, reliable services, that means contractors who are cleaning up the area, who are actually exterminating because there is an infestation issue in the West Ward that no one here has mentioned. Uh, we need to make sure that there's affordable housing. Uh, we also need to make sure that there's a safe environment for the children. My office is on Scotland Road. Behind Scotland Road is Lincoln Avenue. Where Lincoln Avenue School is. West Ward is the only district that has middle school, elementary, preschool, and high school. No one is addressing the issue that we have murders happen in front of our children. So crime is an issue as well, okay? So I'm working on creating safe environments. I would love to see, um, you know, an increase, um, in the equipment and tools that we are giving to our departments, whereas they're actually having functional cameras in the area, you know? I myself, I've worked with the crossguards with crossing the children. I've purchased equipment, signs, cones, anything that I could get that, that was asked by the crossing guards in security in the area to help facilitate a, a safe environment for the children. Um, beyond that, my, my also concern is youth development. Right now, during the pandemic, the kids were walking around like zombies. They had nothing to do. They were bored, they were miserable, and they were looking for more resources. So I want to do more resources for them and seniors.
So at this point, we are open to a few questions for those who may have them.
Yes. I would like to know, okay, certain buildings that live in the building in Orange. And there are several buildings in Orange where the landlords are truth coding for extermination. Okay, they will have certain, um, certainly they just provide one A C, let's say A C pest control. So what they do is they just put down traps and that's it. Like that's gonna be the problem. You bring this to the managers of the building, or the landlords of the building, and I said to them, well, what about a professional exterminator coming in here? And doing a professional job to keep the rodents from coming in the apartments? These are old buildings. There should not be a problem with that. They're opening up in baseboards. Why should the tenant have to close up those things? This is an apartment. This is not our home, the temporary place to be until you want to move into a home. There's some lords, they don't care. They just, it's all about money. Um, you know, pay the rent, pay the rent, but they don't want to do anything about the situation. I have called several times. Code, code enforcement.
But do you have a question?
The question is, something needs to be done about this. When is something gonna be done about this, you know? If you say it's about the tenants in the city of Orange, this is a big thing in Orange, the rodents.
Do we just, anybody jump? Okay, um, well, as a tenant, um, I can definitely feel your pain. I can definitely relate to what you're saying. Um, I've seen it, I've heard it, I've lived it. So that goes back to the code enforcement. That goes back into having a tenant association. We need to be able to know what our rights are. And we also need to be able to fight in an effective manner. A lot of people are afraid that if you don't pay, you know, if you, if you make too much of a complaint, they're gonna try to kick you out, right? And so we need to not only empower ourselves as residents, but yes, that is our home. Regardless, we pay for it. That is our home. Regardless if it's on the second floor, third floor, or if it's a ranch style home, it's our home. And so in my rent, I mean, in my lease, they told me that I'm not allowed to pay for an outside exterminator. So I feel that that is something we need to work with, um, with code enforcement. Also come in, do the exams themselves, maybe it, it's gonna take a whole lot more than that. And as a council member, we would need to get more resources and more representation, okay? So that's what I can say to you, but I understand what you're saying because I live it too.
Yeah, this code enforcement, let me just say this to people. The code enforcement, and I told me a couple of months back, that, oh, oh well, in Orange, when, when they dig up the ground, from when they put new buildings in, this brings the mice up. So this is never gonna go away. Why would you tell me that?
Yeah, it's not solving your problem at all. No.
No, he's an idiot.
Next question?
I have two questions, but I'll, I'll ask them one at a time. One is first.
Any more particular?
No, this is, this is a generic question. So this, this is an observation and my question, and I have another question that I was gonna answer. Do any of you have future goals for higher office in the city of Orange or in the state of New Jersey?
I cannot really answer that truthfully because I don't know. Because if this, because when I first came to this country, right, I came in nineteen eighty-eight. And my whole objective coming was to be a stockbroker. And I achieved that in eighty-nine, and I started ninety-one to work on the Tokyo Marketing Exchange. And I did that for eleven years. After I left there, I had my, I started my own business. The gentleman who trained me while I was on the floor, after we all left together, we all left in two thousand and two, uh, he went and he bought the Tampa Bay Debrae baseball team. What I'm saying is, my goal right now is to work for the residents of Orange. If I can serve them better by obtaining a higher office, I will do that, right? But that is not a part of my agenda right now. My agenda is to be able to listen to what they have to say and speak on their behalf.
Anyone else?
Well, um, it's a, it's a dream, you know, it's an idea, you know, that, you know, we all can embark upon. Like I said, when I first started it, you know, this, uh, campaign, and it was only one thing. And then when I start learning about different thing, that power that was invested in a member of, uh, the council to do, to govern, you know, the local government, I was like, I mean, huh, if I can do this, if I can implement this, if I can make sure that to be part of something that's gonna better people's life ten, fifteen years from now, wow, I'm excited. I'm all in. So, you know, and it's a possibility that one day we might be able, you know, to, I might be able to reach that level where, you know, I could run, you know, for higher office. Thank you.
So, um, just to answer this question, I'm not sure. But to be truthful, I feel that people look at, um, our government upside down. The local government should be at the top because they're the ones who are closer to you. They're the ones who are actually hear you, hearing you on a, on a daily basis, right? Anyone who's in Washington DC, you gotta go through a whole bunch of people before you can get to them, right? And so I feel that we need to value our local officials more than we value our senators and governors, right? But everybody shows up for our presidential election. We have to be responsible and accountable as, as, as voters as well to say, hey, this person lives in my community. I could put a finger on her because I know this is where she works, this is where she teaches, or this is where, or he, sorry. This is where, you know, he normally hangs out because they're a part of the community. Me growing up, I've had experience working with the eleven ninety-nine unions, helping out people coming into the country looking for health benefits and, and employment. I've had, um, I've had experience working on other campaigns. And all I knew was that I always wanted to be, um, at the service of people. I always wanted to be involved with community service. That is the lifestyle that was taught to me growing up. My parents and family members are all service members. And even right now, my mother's not even here because she's volunteering at a church. So this is something that has been instilled in me from an early age. I'm not quite sure where it will take me, but I will go if the people want me to go. I will be wherever they need me to be, God willing. God sets the path for me, and I will answer at the best of my ability.
So there's a reason why I asked that specific question. I'll be very, very clear. The reason why I asked that question is because I needed to understand the metal of the people in front of me. The work in the West Ward is not gonna be, gonna be completed in four years. But in two years is the mayoral election.
Right.
If you shift your focus within the next two years or in the next six years, the mayoral election, we're not gonna be pleased. You will not have our support. I don't care how much I like you personally.
That's right, right.
The business of the West Ward will take more than four years. It will take more than eight years. We have to be committed right now to the work of councilmen for the foreseeable future. I don't care about your other aspirations, but if your purpose is one of greater service, go on about your business. I am solely interested in my neighborhood. I'm solely interested in those things that reflect back on my people. Those are my neighbors. The mayor is too far removed from me and the things that concern me for, for me to throw my hat in his ring before I concern myself with what's going on with the ward. That's the reason why I ask. I need to, I need you guys to be very, very clear. Holding you accountable is very, very hard if your direction and your attention is elsewhere. Those are just words and thoughts. That's what. Those are just words and thoughts, that's what this is. My secondary question is, we won a hollow victory as the city of Orange, it was forefronted by the council against a gentleman that was put in place by the administration, and that was, I'm talking about Edward Willis. We won his payback, it was, you know, it's a paper victory, because at the end of the day, we ultimately paid the price. But when you look at how he came to be where he was, and how he came to be able to get away with so much, it's being uncovered slowly, it began with the stewards that were responsible for passing, sometimes majority, requests for money that he made. They acted as accomplice to, they were complicit in his crim, in his criminality, and there's no accountability for that. The same folks are sitting and running again as incumbents this year. How do you propose to combat and to respond and to, what are you going to put in place to institute some level of accountability to council member, members? I heard you guys talk about people are not kind when you call them on the phone, that's an HR issue, that's outside your purview.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, in, in the interest of time...
I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah, I need you to let them answer so we can move, because we're actually past time, we need to bring this out, but we want people to ask the question.
Okay, well, I personally am not beholden to anyone, and in that regard, I'm not there with any hidden agenda. If it's black, it's black, if it's white, it's white. To me, I'm not going to go and bend my, and bend and break my morals to try to please anyone, I'm just going to go and be a straight shooter. That's what I've always been, and that's what I've always intended to be, my word, I've always been bond, and that's me.
Well, the job is, is straightforward. In order to make a decision, it has to be made collectively, so one person cannot make that decision. So therefore, when I'm in the office, I will make sure that my tenacity, my, um, how do you call it, uh, my need, you know, just to, um, serve the people, will make sure that any issue that comes in that office will be resolved. It may not be resolved today or tomorrow, but somehow it will get resolved.
Okay, so first and foremost, I do not condone, uh, I do not condone bribery, I don't condone, um, misrepresentation, I don't condone misconduct, um, especially, uh, misuse of people's funds and misplacement of their trust. Um, I have a certain level of integrity that I operate with, and as a business owner and someone from a corporate background and a HR background, I feel that I am able to influence and work with people, regardless of who they are, in order to come to some type of agreement. You're not always going to agree, but no, I would not be complacent and watch somebody else burn the city to the ground. So I would hold them accountable, and I would, I will push back, because I'm here to represent the residents. I'm not here for a check, I have a business, I'm here to get things done, because I feel that I have the experience, the heart, the passion, and the skillset to make some impact here. So I don't have any family members that need a job, I'm not here to hook a friend up with, with employment, or, or a home, or property, or anything like that. I am in this because there is a need, and the people are tired of being bamboozled. So no, I would not stand by and watch anyone else take advantage of our city.
That concludes the city council debate.
My question is, my name is Dan, it was tough to follow, but this brief, uh, what are you trying to do or think you ought to improve the condition of the school? Um, that's probably because I'm a father of our children, many of my siblings, you correct me if I'm wrong, you said, just, just briefly, just, if you could expand on the rest of the, briefly, but...
Okay, that concludes the city council candidate debate.